Everybody look at me. Everybody look at me. One more, please. Try to zoom in a little also. Everybody look at me. Thank you.
Look at me.
I want to get the banner, one more. Want to get the banner. One second, give me one second, I apologize. Ying, Vito, look at me, please. Want to get the banner. Thank you.
Okay, can we have a picture with all of the sponsors, please? UA3 board, Con Edison, and any of the other nonprofit co-sponsors representing your organization and organization? Please come up and stand behind the candidates for a group photo. Qiu Ban, Qiu Ban, Qiu Ban, my Chinese and I'll be in Pukai, thank you. Qiu Ban, Qiu Ban.
You ready?
Come on.
There you go. One, two, three. Hold on.
I'm coming in front of you.
Three?
I don't want to block you.
Here you go. Three, two, one. One more. Great, thank you.
One second, don't leave, don't leave, please. Am I blocking you, Kim, or you're good? Look at me, please. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. We're going to start very quickly, just a couple of safety items. Please make sure you know where your nearest exit is in case of an emergency. And also if you need to use the restroom, once you leave, make a right and walk all the way down the hallway, and you'll see the ladies' room and the men's room. Thank you. So, welcome and good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gigi Lee, and I will be serving as the moderator for this debate of the Republican candidates for city council, District 43. You will start now with some opening remarks from UA3 president and chairman, Don Hong.
Thank you, Gigi. Gigi, you are an incredible moderator. I thank you very much. I do want to say a special thanks to Con Edison. Con Edison has made these civil engagements possible. Without them, we would not be here. So, thank you, Con Edison, and thank you so much, Leo. Of course, the volunteers at UA3, not only UA3, but all the nonprofits that have collaborated to give us the numerous 40-plus questions. Thank you very much. And good luck with the candidates.
Thank you. And please extend your applause for our two candidates here today, Mr. Vito Lethal and Ms. Ying Tang. We'll start by opening up over the ground rules and the format for today's live lead and hopefully very enlightening conversation, debate, however you want to call it. We will start with a two-minute introduction from each candidate, and then we will have seven open-ended questions, which were selected, six were selected, from a list of 45 questions that were submitted from the sponsors and co-sponsors, and one that I, as moderator, am putting in there to spice things up a little bit. And then you will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. If you mention your opponent in your answer, your opponent will have 30 seconds to offer rebuttal to your statement. Then each candidate will have an opportunity to ask the other candidate a question, and then we will move on to a lightning round of yes-no answers. And finally, you will have a two-minute closing statement. She looks down here, is our Steve Timer. He will raise the red card to let you know you have 30 seconds left, and then a yellow card for 15 seconds left. And finally, he will ring the bell when your timer's up. And Andy, who is handling our audio, will then turn off your mic so that I do not have to scream, "Please stop the thing." And we've been very diligent on timing because we have a lot of great content to go through. So, we have, you picked randomly your seating arrangements. We will also alternate candidates answering the questions first and second, and you will also help me keep track because if there's just a lot of questions, just let me know if I have it marked incorrectly. But I'll try to do my best. So, with that, we are ready to begin. So, we will start first with Vito and then with Ying. Please offer your two-minute introductory remarks.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank you organizers. I want to thank this town for being able to participate in this. It's going to be a great afternoon, I'm looking forward to it. So, as many of you may or may not know, I ran for senate in the 17th district in 2022. That district encompasses most of the 43rd city council district, and I came within 0.58% of victory. That's despite the fact that Republicans are outnumbered 8:1, and I was outspent approximately 10:1. And that showing was predicated on my years of service in this team. I was a lieutenant for 32 years in the police department, helping people, helping keep the subway safe. But more important, my wife Kim is right there. She and I have been working in District 20, which is the school district, for the last 10 years, helping the children and the families in this area, which is also mostly of the 43rd city council district. In fact, I was PTA president in 2017. I retired from the police department to do that. And Kim and I worked together at IS 187, right around the corner. And that school is a majority Asian school. And that's relevant because in June of 2018, how I got involved, how I went down the path to be here today is because in June of 2018, the prior administration decided that our best high schools had too many Chinese and Asian children. And that's a fact. And I personally was asked by the families of the school if I could help. And so, Kim and I, while we conducted protest, we marched across the Brooklyn Bridge. What we did is I had press conferences. The first press conference was my seventh-grade son answering questions. I spoke to council members, I spoke to assembly members, and I spoke to senators about this, and we were successful. I had no intention of being here, running for city council, but after I lost in January, I worked for Lester Chan, the assembly member Chan. And he personally asked me to do this because he said that based upon my service and my experience, I was the best candidate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ting Tan. I'm running for the city council as a Republican candidate, we're here. I'm a mother too. The first time I came down to the politician because the education has been going down in the crisis. The GNT program has been used by the lottery system instead of the bar system. That is the first time they stepped into fight on what is going on with our system, what going on with the system that we have. And I am a mother. I'm also a monetary community. I have been doing outreach community for the last seven years. I have been participating in a lot of water access, like food distribution, and social services for our senior citizens. As a normal original citizen, I want to say that I really want to hope we have more elected officials that can work hard for our citizens. I am a person that don't want to draw a wonderful future for our residents that we cannot commit it, finish it, accomplish like the official that we have right now. I can rely on them to do what we need. I can rely on the official we have right here to hear our voices in the parent and the residents. That's why I stand up here to fight for our community and fight for our senior citizens and fight for our children. I'm here to fight for our safety. I'm here to fight for quality education. I'm here to fight for protect our seniors and also our homeowners in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. You will now start with our open-ended questions, and we'll start with Ying. Also, please let me know if you need me to repeat the question. Our first two questions will be on the issues of mental health and public safety. Our first question. Last week, 24-year-old Daniel Penny choked Jordan Neely to death on a New York City subway. Mr. Penny has not been charged. Please share your thoughts with us on mental health and our public safety.
So, first of all, I'm not a professional on mental health, but from my understanding and my research, mental health has been a main concern as well. So, the district is mutually incorporated to attribute this goal for operating a home and, I mean, from the mental illness people who are patients, I mean, the residents, for several unstable individual persons in the subway. It is crucial and sure they are doing, like, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Should I restart?
No, go ahead, you have 90 seconds.
Okay, okay. So, I'm sorry, I'll read again. So, I'm not professional on mental health issues, but from my understanding and from my research, mental health has a very big concern for our public safety because they don't know what they're doing when they get to the train station. And we have to guarantee support and help for them to prevent them from doing this. We need social workers to do monetary and secure that they have the receipt of treatment for mental illness.
Thank you. Vito?
Thank you. So, my first question response. What happened to the $1 billion of thrive money that was squandered by the last administration? That's the biggest question. What happened on the subway was evidence of a complete failure and a complete breakdown of city services. This has been going on since the De Blasio administration, where individuals are allowed to be ill and not be treated, and that's the stuff in the subway. So, in my prep year, I read the Adrian Adams, a city council speaker, Health Roadmap, and that listed action items on the local, state, and federal level. Much of it has to do with getting information to people so that they can get the help that they need, building out services. And that's great. Do it all. Do it all. But at some point, when an individual who is too sick to know that he needs help or too addicted to know that he needs help, addiction is an illness, we need to move toward compassionate institutional care. We need to convert Rikers into a state-of-the-art mental health and addiction treatment facility where individuals who are dangerous to themselves or others can be housed and get treated. Thank you.
And we will answer first for our second question on public safety. Please share with us your thoughts on gun control. Please share with us your thoughts on gun control.
Well, first of all, it's not really a city council issue, right? So, we have to work within the framework, within the rules that have been given by the Supreme Court and by their guidelines. And then the state waves in with their laws, and we have to try to, as a city council, try to make sense of it all and deal with whatever they are giving us to work with. Gun control, the first step is gun control. We want to crack down on people who use illegal drugs, sorry, I apologize for legal guns. Well, the first step is to severely penalize those people who are caught with a gun and send them to prison. Send them to prison. Prosecute them. The district attorneys in the city now have a policy that if you are armed with a gun and you go into a store and you commit a burglary or a robbery and you don't use the gun, well, it's not considered use of a weapon. That's a reversal of policy. When I was a transit cop, if someone was armed with a gun, armed with a deadly weapon, it automatically was use of a firearm first degree, robbery first degree, burglary first degree. Whatever it was, those charges were upgraded, and those district attorneys understood that the first step toward addressing gun violence is arresting and holding people who actually use and possess guns illegally.
Thank you. So, right now, we have a very well-established regulation for the gun control. In reality, the most people who commit crime with the gun is the illegal gun. So, we should put more regulations on those illegal guns controlled. And right now, in your city, the crime with gun control is more going crisis, the crime of crime crisis, and because of the barrier we have. First of all, we need to refund the police, and we also need to hire our officers so they can protect our residents when they go on the street. And the second one is, we need to restore the qualified ability and the model of the police officers. We need to give them the protection because they risk their life in front of us. They have to be protected ourselves, and we have to have the way to protect the resident lives. Thank you.
We will move on to the next question, which will deal with affordability and the economy. And Ying, you will be the first to respond. What steps will you take as a city council member to support the small businesses in our neighborhood?
Okay, small businesses are now under crisis because of inflation, the rent and public safety issues. It's very difficult for the business because right now, they are paid very low, especially from the inflation. So, first of all, we need to protect them from the crisis. So, public safety would be the first priority. And the next one, I would do, I would pick a tax relief for the C-PAD so they can not be burdened by the taxes. And this would ensure our business can survive in the city. Recently, the New York City governor, why, a program called New York City Desk, which allows small businesses to have information how to run the business, how to get a permit, and also how to reduce the fines violation. So, on the other hand, New York City also has a lot of contract throughout the city with the small businesses. As a city council member, I would like to be a bridge with all these small businesses and make sure they have the contract and they can survive in the city.
Thank you.
You know, it depends on the businesses we were talking about. I mean, we're not going to stop people from shopping online. Any more than 50 years ago, we could stop people from using computers and having typewriter or fair people go out of business. The world is in flux right now. It's up to us to incentivize things that are going to work and de-incentivize things that aren't. For example, all of those empty retail storefronts along our avenues, perhaps we should incentivize the doctors and professional people who are utilizing brownstones and apartments from what was once residential areas for professional office space. We need to ensure that only owner-occupied physicians, lawyers, and other professionals are in those residential spaces. Because that's what the original intention, that's what the original community was. We had, we had the doctor, had his office in the basement of the first floor, and he and his family lived on the top two floors. And we saw our doctors in the communities, we saw them walking and shopping with us. And so, let's incentivize that, if that still exists anywhere, and also incentivize people moving who are not owner-occupied from these residential spaces into these retail establishments along our corridors that are empty. So, we're solving two problems. We're solving, we're addressing the housing shortage. We're also trying to fill up those empty spaces. So, two for one, can I get it straight?
Our next question will focus on education. So, Vito, you will be the first to answer. What steps should the city council take to ensure that all students have equal access to high-quality education regardless of their race or socioeconomic background?
Thank you. I've been working on educational as a member of the CDC, and before that, I've been with SLTs for the last 10 years. I am intimately familiar with budgets and these issues. It's not money. It's not money. We spend more money per child than any place else in the city. A lot of it has to do with a bloated bureaucracy that is sucking money up and is not accountable to anyone. What we need to do, especially in our most underserved areas, is recreate the great things that we have here in Community Education Council District 20. We have what's called the seamless day. So, kids go to school from 8:30 to 2:30, and then there's an after-school program. There's also a program before school. Summer Rising. Every child, every single child who wants to see the Summer Rising program should be afforded one. Whether it's for remediation, to pick up some skills that they're lacking, whether it's enrichment, to do something new, or whether it's for advancement, to take a chemistry course that they can take a more difficult course the following year. These are the things that we need to do, and we need to make sure that we do not pull children down to try to lift people up. And that's one of the most important things I can communicate, is that's what this idea is in some people in the city council, that we have to break children down, and I will fight against that with my last dying.
Thank you. Yes. What steps should the city council take to ensure that all students have equal access to a high-quality education regardless of their race or socioeconomic background?
Okay, I believe that we should first restore the education system by doing the bar system. For example, the GNT program right now, they're using the lottery system over the bar system. So, our kids cannot get into the program based on their academic status. So, for some of my child, I have the older child who is lucky enough to get into the program because we have a lot of family who moved out of the district. They have concerns about the equality for the education. And right now, based on the pyramid system, if you're oversly to get in the GNT program, the youngest are more likely to get into the program as well. So, right now, based on the lottery system, our kids cannot really get into the program anymore, and the quality of that is totally changed. For example, the teachers have to teach more academic people in a different level, and they have to take care of people who are lower than they are. So, as a city council member, I would like to put back the resources, and also we have to change medical system. And also, I want to allocate the resources, funding to our school to make sure that we have enough resources for the teacher and the student and the nurses. So, also, I want to plan a more advanced state program so the student can more learn about the science places. Thank you.
So, Ying will continue with you answering this question first. What is your plan to support affordable childcare for working families?
Okay, affordable childcare. So, not now, New York City has 3K and 4K programs that provide the daycare service for ages of 3 and 4. For the low-income families, they can apply for a daycare service for free until the late afternoon. I believe that is very well established. But for the people who have anything, that want to have the childcare for anything, there's a totally different cases. Because all these facilities, they are not aware of, like, for example, they're in pain. They are not well-speaking, they don't know how to express themselves. So, this facility might not be taken care of in the way they are supposed to be. So, there are chances, there are some risks, chances for the parents. But also, is this parent's choices? Is this a choice of what parents can make if they want to put the child in a place that someone can take care of and they can get back to work? So, they can make basic life spending? That is the option. The New York City have the program for daycare voucher. So, all these parents, they can get a voucher, and they can use that throughout the city to get the program for the children.
Thank you.
So, unfortunately, Mayor Adams, in this budget, they're cutting the 3K programs that they wanted to push out, see why. They've stopped building it out, and I think that's a mistake. And in fact, we need to build out 3K, 3K centers, and make sure that every school district, every zip code, every area has enough of these 3K and 3K centers to serve all of the people in the population, especially in areas where the kids aren't doing as well. And start there and build out to districts that are doing better and really, really well. With that, the 3K centers can be built out further. Building a 3K center, you can build a couple more floors and you can have access to toddler, what do we call it, 1K, 2K. That's very, very expensive to do. I think we could utilize volunteer parents. We could utilize students to staff these programs. But we have to recreate, in neighborhoods that are poorer, we have to recreate what parents of means do. Parents of means read to their children from the time that they're born. Parents of means go, "Mommy and me" on Saturday, "Music and me," and whatever else. I forgot what we did all. But education of our children starts at birth. No, strike that. It starts before birth with good maternal care, and that's another thing we have to address.
Thank you. The next question will be on the topic of housing. Vito, you'll be the first to answer this question. One of the main hurdles in creating more affordable housing in District 43 is the availability of land for new construction. Please share your thoughts on how we should be building affordable housing.
Well, I mean, it's not as simple as putting up buildings, right? We have to use existing structures that are underutilized, such as these retail establishments to convert them to residential, where appropriate, making sure that we have enough city services to go along with these conversions. But it's not as simple as building buildings. I was at community board meetings. We have three projects, one on 90th Street and Shore Row, one on New Yudrick Avenue, one on 86th Street, that are asking for upzoning. And you know what? The community doesn't want it. And we have to be cognizant of what the community wants, to be respectful for all types of housing, including one- and two-family residential low-density buildings that the far-left progressives of the city council want to destroy. We need to talk to our communities, and we need to do something that they do every place else, or most places, and it's called urban planning. A comprehensive plan, neighborhood by neighborhood, where you get together with input from the community, and we decide, okay, maybe along 13th Avenue. We have all of these storefronts. Maybe we make the storefronts higher with apartments that have a 25% affordability, 50% market rate, or some mix. But that's what we have to do. Whatever we do, the most important... Uh, but that's what we have to do. Whatever we do, the most important thing is to do it in partnership with the community. And as a city council member, I will facilitate that discussion.
Thank you. Ying, so. So, the population has not grown for the last few years, and the inflation caused the horrible housing crisis in the city. This is impossible for us to find affordable housing right now under a thousand dollars. While the high taxes, maintaining costs, and also other fixed increase, homeowners, uh, have to increase the revenue problem. Especially right now, the extremely low and costly emission prices. Homeowners tend to, uh, keep the empty apartment rather than renting out to the, to the public. So, this is also the main cause for the housing demand crisis. In order to solve this problem, we have to jeopardize the emission classes in port. So, the homeowner will feel more comfortable to rent out this space. And also, in order to have new building to have affordable units, it has to respond, so we can have at least, uh, twenty percent of the affordable unit each building. But what about the quality of life for the residents? The population has increased a lot. We always have traffic congestion. In the past few years, we have a lot of one-family compared to available families. The contractor and the developers should not build expensive lots only for reach, but cannot instill the affordable housing. In all of the minimums, it, I would suggest that convert industry building that are more radiant, more accessible.
Thank you. Now, we're going to try to find all of the questions. We'll start with Ying. What will be the first piece of legislation you will introduce as council member?
Okay, uh, as a council member, I would suggest that...
Let me repeat the question. What will be the first piece of legislation that you will introduce as council member?
Okay, as a council member, I would list it for, um...
The first piece of legislation. So, anything that you want to introduce in the entirety of the city council that you would like to put into law?
Okay, I would say for more on the middle-class, uh, senior citizens. I would, uh, make them more affordable, qualified for the resources that we have.
Thank you. Vito?
Thank you. The previous city councils have defunded, demoralized, and demonized our New York City police officers. They did that by removing qualified immunity from them and by passing a diaphragm law that is vague and it puts police officers' lives at risk. My first piece of legislation would be to define diaphragm. Uh, what we could do, to throw out the diaphragm law and to define specifically what a chokehold is as obstruction by a bribery or the tritium. And don't say that it's illegal, and that if a cop is wrestling with somebody, uh, that he's automatically liable for a misdemeanor if he touches their diaphragm or they, or if he's struggling with them. That's insane. That says the message to police officers, do not do anything. We have to get rid of that law. What we say, we say, we define, we define obstruction of the tritium or bribery, we define that as deadly physical force. So, but not that it's illegal, but that the officer or anybody has to justify using. Thank you.
Thank you. So, members of the Republican Party, the candidate gets to ask the other candidate if they choose a question. Um, so, Vito?
So, I'm, uh, curious. I know that you're familiar with senior centers in the nonprofit world. What do you think is a, is a good return for, um, services? In other words, how much, what percentage of a nonprofit business should be, should be toward the actual services and mission of the nonprofit? I know Tunnel to Towers, one of my favorites, they throw it out there. They're like ninety-five percent. All of their money goes to their mission. Uh, what do you think is a, is a good ratio?
Okay, so first of all, I would say there would be more regulation because I am aware that some of the privatization, they not using it in a proper way. So, they got a waste of our taxpayers' money. I would say I would put more regulation. I would keep on tracking of how those privatization use the money and make sure that they put all the power into our community.
Thank you. Ying, you have an opportunity to also ask, uh, to ask a question as well.
So, Vito, I know you were a community liaison in education and public safety for Lester Chang. Uh, however, I only know that you mean to one person community, meaning a lot of time, you're having great time in Canada. Is it can, 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 that is where you lose your span of vacation, huh? Okay, so that is kind of a waste of taxpayers' money and time. How would you prove that you won't abuse a taxpayer like when you get elected?
So, uh, you say that I can't go on vacation. I don't, uh... Uh, I have a house in Cape Cod. I love it. It's great. We can learn so much from what Massachusetts does. Massachusetts, the bluest state, they have a marijuana law that worry, that isn't as messed up as the New York State law is. In Massachusetts, you don't have ice cream trucks containing marijuana pumping down our children's streets. You don't have illegal marijuana shops on every corner. Because you know why? Because every illegal marijuana shop has a security guard, oftentimes, and a non-duty police officer who's working overtime, checking IDs to make sure that children aren't, uh, our, children aren't getting in there, that those shops are acting legally and responsibly. Okay, we could learn so much from other municipalities, including Florida and Massachusetts and otherwise. And I will be, no matter where in the world I am, I will be fighting for the district. I will be fighting for the district. Uh, thank you, Dimitri. Shout out to Dimitri there. Um, listen, that's the way it is. No matter where in the world, we have virtual, we have people in place that will take care of this. And we have, we have, it's about, it's about driving policy. It's about, it's about knowing the issues and pushing forth the best way to resolve problems. And I could do that from the vote.
Thank you. The next step is the lightning round. So, we have five yes or no questions. They're meant to be hard, so please try to say yes or no, and keep it only to yes or no. Ying, you will answer first, and then Vito. Here we go. Do you support congestion pricing?
Congestion pricing?
No, it's easy.
Do you support outdoor street dining?
Right now?
Uh, no.
Do you support the expansion of gifted and talented programs?
Expansion, yes.
Yes.
Do you support the legalization of basement apartments?
Well, this is a tough one. It really depends on the, 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 like, if you convert it to legal housing, that would be, uh, a problem to solve the revenue system and also the housing prices. But also, we have to make sure that it's safe to be legalized.
Yes, what you said.
Okay. Last one. Do you support fair share?
It's really depends on...
You can, if you want to elaborate, you can.
Okay, I, I would say that everybody have a tough time to use all this welfare. And I recommend they use it somehow, but I would want people to abuse the system and use all this welfare.
So, yes with that.
Great. Thank you for trying to stick that out. So, um, we're now going to start with closing statements. You'll each have two minutes for closing statements. And, uh, we'd like you to please address why you believe you're the best candidate to serve as the next council member from District Forty-three. Uh, we're reversing the order from the opening remarks, so Ying, you will start, and then Vito gets to close out the program.
So, um, I have been doing a lot of social services in the community in the last several years. I'm aware of what our city citizens need and what they, they need to be taken care of. And I am a person who is very hardworking, passionate, and very willing to listen to all the people. Whatever the concern would be my concern. I'll be here twenty-four hours, seven days a week to serve our community. And whenever we have a problem, come to me. I will light a lighter. I will go by the line to fix a problem for you. So, yeah, please welcome Ying. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. This was very painless. Thank you so much. I want to finish up by saying that this is a Republican primary. Republicans don't usually have primaries. I know the Democrats do. Uh, but it's very analogous to what I like to call spring training. Uh, in spring training, whether you're Yankee fan or F fan, uh, you know, the first weeks of spring training, you break up a team and you, uh, you have into squad teams. And when you do that, you know, when, when one member of the team is playing against another member, they're sliding into base, they don't build spikes up really hard because they always remember that that's the person that's still on my team. That's the person that come, when spring training is over, we're going to have to work together and fight to beat all of the other teams. Come July, whoever wins this contest is going to have to work with all of the Republicans, have to work with moderate Democrats, and cobbled together independents, and reach out at everybody from every community. And together, we need to beat the Democrat camp. We need to push back against far-left progressive policies and laws that are destroying this city. I have a thirty-two-year history of fighting for this, uh, city. I have a ten-year history of fighting for the community, including the Asian community specifically. I was asked by some member, Lester Chang, to do this. I was nominated by the Republican conservative supporters to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Uh, can I applaud the two candidates? And they're being so much appreciated in the whole party, and they gave my job, and they as well. I wish you all luck, and thank you for joining us today.